Hi Jim.
Hi Gail.
Hi Lori.
Oh, I'm on. Okay, hi.
Hi there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, buddy, sure.
Am I on there?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great.
Hi Sue.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we can. So we've got Tink and Johnny. Oh, and Christina. Hi, Tink. What do you want? What do you want? What do you want, you? What do you want? He is such a terrible boy. There she is. Hi Christina. Hi Christina, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. It looks like we're all set. Oh, we're waiting for Johnny.
I just want to confirm, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go. Is that Johnny?
That's Johnny.
Okay. Okay, it's six o'clock and we all are here. Where's Lori? She was here a minute ago. Lori, are you still with us? Okay. It's six o'clock, so I would like to bring the Morongo Valley Community Services District Board of Directors' Special Board Meeting of February 25th, 2021 to order. Mr. Yearsley, can we have the roll call, please?
Gil Swart.
Here.
Christina Brooke.
Here.
Lori Klimowitz.
Here.
Johnny Tolbert.
Here.
Christina Gorki.
Okay. Johnny, would you do the pledge of allegiance for us? For all of us?
Are you ready?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now would like to make a correction. I think it was an oversight, but we need to approve the agenda and it's not on my list, so has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Are there any other corrections or questions? Okay, so do I have?
Gail?
Yeah.
We didn't have anything to comment.
Oh, I'm gonna do that after, after we do the agenda.
I know. It's supposed to be on, okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comments. Jim, do we have some people that would like to speak? I have one public comment that I picked up at the office. But I'll wait. Are there any people in the?
I don't see anybody's hands up.
Okay, well, I will read the one that I got. Oh, here it is. It says, and it doesn't say who it's from. Oh, Curtis, I think it says. Please open the parks and tennis courts as soon as possible. These are the only local activities for many adults and kids. Please, outside is the best place in a COVID setting. Thank you. So, we will be addressing that on the agenda. But first, we have new, new business. Discussion and possible action regarding possible Brown Act violations in the closed session that we had on February 17. And I have a little something. We've consulted with our attorney, Mr. Kennedy, and he has kind of given us the wording that we should use and how we should go about this. So I will read to you what he gave me. It's that both the board and Mr. Yearsley may have had their rights violated in the closed session. We believe that a violation may have occurred at the February 17th regular board meeting during the closed session. Our attorney has advised us that we cannot make a determination about this issue and need to turn the documentation over to the district attorney to do, of San Bernardino County, to do an investigation. So that's that's what we need to talk about and decide if we're gonna do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are we? Hi, are we able to access and listen to the specific part that was broadcast?
Well, Jim, did you, I thought you sent that out to us. Did you?
I did. Every board member received a copy of it.
Okay. Do you remember what day it was? Cause I didn't see it.
Oh, that he sent it out?
Email, right?
Or that?
Yeah, what day did you send it out? I have crazy emails.
This was an audio?
Huh?
Was it an audio file?
Nope, it was a link.
No, it's a Go ahead, Jim.
It wa, it was a link. So, I'll check my email real quick and give you the date.
Okay. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Did the attorney say that we need to, or we should, or we could? What did, what was his verbiage?
His verbiage is that it's a serious violation of the Brown Act. And that if we want to do things legally, what we should do is we should turn over the information to the district attorney of San Bernardino County and let them look at it and see what they, what their determination is. Because we really can't determine it ourselves. It has to be investigated.
The email was on the 23rd.
Did you get that Lori, the 23rd?
Yeah, I found it. Thank you.
Okay.
So he's saying we should turn it over? He's not saying you might, you may, you should.
No, he's, he is saying that we had, the board has to make that decision. He said it's a serious violation and that if we want to, if we want to go forward with it, then that's how we do it. We turn over all the information that we have to the district attorney of San Bernardino County and they will investigate it, or they may not investigate it. It's up to them to, to look at what the information is and to make that decision of investigating it. Cause we really, there's not really anything we can do without having an investigation.
I know, but when you read the verbiage from the attorney, I need to hear that again because
Okay, okay.
Hi Gail, it's Linda.
Hi Linda. But here, I'll read it again, Christina. Both the board
Linda, I recognize your voice. So nice to see you, hear you.
Okay, Christina, both the board and Mr. Yearsley may have had their rights violated in the closed session we, section. We believe that a violation may have occurred at the February 17th board meeting during the closed session. Our attorney has advised us, we cannot make a determination about this issue and need to turn it over, turn over the documentation to the district attorney of San Bernardino County for an investigation. So yeah, I guess he is saying that's, that's what we should do.
That's what I'm getting at. He said, and we need to turn the documents over. So if our attorney is telling us that we need to turn the documents over, then we need to turn the documents over, in my opinion. That's what our legal counsel is telling us to do.
With no more discussion.
What'd you say Lori?
I said with no more discussion, except to decide to turn it over.
Right. And then they will take the information and they will tell us what their determination is, because we can't do that ourselves. And so that's the course that we should take.
Well, if that's what our attorney is telling us we should do, then I'm gonna make a motion that we do what our attorney's telling us to do. Turn that information over to the district attorney for them to decide whether or not they will do anything, or they might not, or they might. Whatever they need to do. If that's what he's telling us to do, Gail.
Yes, that's what he's telling us to do.
Then we need to follow what he's saying.
When did you talk to him, Gail?
I talked to him yesterday. I talked to him, I think right after the meeting, I texted him. And I talked to him yesterday and today.
Yeah, cause he called me today.
Okay.
His comment point blank was, yeah, he's not gonna do anything, because there's nothing there. It was coming to me.
Say that again Johnny? What was his comment to you?
The DA will do nothing, because there's nothing there.
Well, it's not
Well, it still needs to be addressed.
Um, Johnny, did you contact the attorney, or did he contact you?
Both.
Which happened first?
I called his office. I had a question about a Brown Act violation the board may have committed, may not have committed. I need to find out if we had.
So he did not reach out to you first? You reached out to him first?
Correct.
Okay.
I have, but I believe the board had committed Brown Act violation, as I brought up on our last meeting. That meeting was in closed sessions, I would make no further comment about that at this time. And he answered my question about that. And while we were talking, he asked me about, he brought up the possible Brown Act violation on the agenda today. He told me that he felt that was in regard to myself. And he told me there was nothing there. I said, well, I will not comment, I am not gonna ask many questions that could be regarding myself, because you are not my attorney. You, I'm only gonna ask you about what I believe could be possible Brown Act violation by the board to cover the district. And he answered that question. But since that possible Brown Act violation was committed during a closed session, I can comment no further until the board is in closed session.
Well, there's a there's a motion on the table to turn over whatever information we have to the district attorney of San Bernardino County. Is there a second? Lori, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna ask for the motion to be restated, and you just did that. And I second.
Okay, I'd like to take a roll call vote on this. Gary?
Gil Swart.
Yes.
Christina Brooke.
Aye.
Lori Klimowitz.
Aye.
Johnny Tolbert.
Nay.
Christina Gorki.
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. Kennedy, our attorney, said that we have to write up the documentation and send the video, or the audio, or whatever it was. I guess it was just the audio. Uh, no, or maybe it was the video too, yeah. Over to the district attorney, so the office will take care of that. And that we'll just see what happens. Okay, next on the, yes, go ahead Johnny.
I would advise before that is done, that all board members actually take the time to review the video before we make that move. It, it appears to me from comments made by board members, they have not taken a chance. They have not taken the time to do that yet. So you might want to know exactly what you are sending to the DA. Because you're gonna find out, there's nothing there.
Okay, because it's an opinion. However, I do agree that we should each let Gail know within a particular amount of time that we have looked at it, et cetera. And then we can proceed with the actions.
Yeah, and the thing is, we really don't have the expertise to know what is relevant and what isn't relevant.
Right.
So really, the only thing we can do is turn it over to somebody who knows the law and knows, and we give them the information we have.
But if Johnny wants
To see what happens, but I would be glad
Yeah, we can set up, you have to listen to it by a certain amount, certain time, let Gail know, and then it can be sent in.
Because, understand, once we
How long?
Sorry, my apologies. Go ahead, Gail.
No, go ahead. Go ahead Johnny.
Understand, if we open the district attorney, if we open the DA investigation of this district, everything that's going on the last two and a half years, this district will come out. So, keep that in mind, if you want to start, you want to start this. You're asking for trouble.
Opinion.
From what I, from what I understand, and I, I'll have to check it out with Mr. Kennedy again. All they're going to do is look at what we send them on this one issue. They're not, that's, that's what they're gonna look at. So, but we've approved it. What date do you all want to, to be, get back to me, that you've listened to it?
First of all, am I the only one that hasn't had a chance? Everyone else listened to it.
I don't believe I've received the link.
If we make it
We already took a vote that is going to be turned over.
Right.
So, why are we even worrying about this? We're just supposed to be turning it over
We're trying to placate Johnny and make sure he understands that we all listen to it.
Because, it's not placating Johnny and Lori. It's coming down to, if you're going to do something, know what you are doing. Know what actors you are taking on, what you're taking it on. Not about placating anybody.
And also
If you want to make an informed decision, then you should be listening to the, looking at the video and making it
No, it's not up to us to investigate. It's not up to us. It's like, when we're at school and we're a mandated reporter on child abuse, it is not up to us to investigate. It is up to us to put in, you know, what we suspect could be a problem. And it's up to the professionals to investigate it. It's the same thing.
What I'm saying is up to us if we're gonna make a decision to contact someone or not. And you cannot make that decision if you do not know what you're making the contact about.
We know what happened.
So far, I'm being told that two people have not taken the time to look at the video, or had the chance to look at the video.
At the meeting though, I'm fine with what I shared and what I said.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying
Johnny, 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 hold on Johnny. What we're gonna do is, we voted, we're going to send it to the district attorney and all the members of the board can go ahead and look at the video. We were all in the session and we, this is over now, because we voted on it. And we're gonna move on to the next subject. Reopen Covington Park and CSD Office. Mr. Yearsley, give us the info.
Okay, so we did a big push on the CDC this week to go through everything because Christina had gone and talked to them and they said it could be open. So we looked at what we could, what reasons why we could open it, and what would keep us from opening it. Some of the old things that would keep us from opening it was that we had to have water and sanitizer. They had to wash with water and then they had to use sanitizer after. Well, after calling and talking to the CDC, they called me back a couple of days later and said for me to check the new regulations that were sent out. So I printed them off because I didn't seem to find what she was talking about. And what they changed it to was, instead of water and sanitizer, they are now saying water or sanitizer in the bathrooms that the people have to use or can use while they're in there. So that works now with our outside bathrooms, because we don't have water in them. It is say, or, so now we can just use sanitizer. So now, we can use our outside bathrooms and the, the parks, as they said, have been open. We had a problem though with the bathrooms that we didn't have the right cleaning supplies, or the setup for what they wanted. But now, the lady said that we would be compliant as long as we kept sanitizer in there and, and always full. So we also have to keep the bathrooms clean. So it does put a little more on us. We do need to get some tech sanitizer units to put in the bathrooms. We do have to start cleaning the bathrooms more often. We have to go in and sanitize the bathrooms more often. So therefore, we can have the outside bathrooms open, so the park could open. Now, inside the building, the, the regulations are pretty much the same. We have to have bathrooms for them to be able to go in and wash their hands or sanitize. We've always had those. But as long as the distancing of six feet stays and there's no gathering of people in, in congregations and that we only have as many in there as chairs can sit in a six feet apart area, then we could have meetings, small meetings, back in the NPR. Then, they get, they sent me another one on sports. So for the baseball, it's the same thing, the distancing is the same. So as long, the parents and everybody could come, as long as they stay six feet apart and don't gather in groups. And the baseball players, when they're not on the field playing, have to stay six feet apart and they can't gather to talk either. And the bathrooms have, over there, have the same thing with the sanitizers. So, my recommendation, only because of the change with the sanitizer, it would allow us to be within the CDC regulations to open everything up, even have the the art colony open, and we could have small meetings in the in the NPR, in the Mesquite Room. But we'd have to be very careful because the main part of that is, is no gatherings before or after or during the meeting. And everybody has to stay six feet apart and always have masks on. So, the board now can decide if they would like to open up. I have talked to Buddy who did our locking and cleaning before on the weekends. And he is willing, it'll cost us about a hundred bucks more, but he is willing on the weekends to go down several times to sanitize the bathrooms to have them open, and then he will still lock them every day and open them on the weekends only, the because Ilidore will be doing during the week. So, this is the way, if we could, if the board wants, we can follow these procedures. We can't open a hundred percent, let big huge parties and weddings and stuff go on. But we could open at a certain amount right now, in the NPR and the playground areas and all that could open up, just, and we can open our outside bathrooms. So that's what the board needs to decide if they want to do it on that limited type of basis.
Could you? Go ahead Johnny.
Um, in some places that I have seen that have been open, they're required to, um, keep a sheet of saying when the bathrooms were cleaned. Do we have to deal with it also?
Yes, but Buddy's gonna do that on the weekend. We're gonna put a card in there like they do in the fast food restaurants to show when somebody went in, so there'll be an initial and a time. And that has to, we'll have that in all the outside bathrooms and inside. Inside bathrooms will not be open unless there is a meeting in one of the rooms or the colony is open. We, we will not open those during the other time, because we don't have enough to clean all that.
Thank, thank you, that answers my question.
Johnny, do you want to give us the financial, kind of, give us a little bit of an idea of what it's gonna cost?
Why would you ask me that?
Uh, I meant Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, well, the only, the new costs above and beyond what we were paying before, I'll just give you those. The sanitizer, they're a little bag, like a packet bag that goes inside the machine, which locks. And Buddy has said he will donate a metal strap casing to go around them to keep them from busting them open, or stealing them. So the cost we'll have is an extra hundred dollars Buddy will charge for doing the whole weekend, doing the, checking the bathrooms and keeping the card up to time. And, and then locking them like he used to, is the same price as it was. So we'll have a hundred dollar increase there. The biggest cost we're gonna have is the sanitizer bags are twenty-five dollars apiece. And we are gonna have to know, we will go through a lot of those. There's no way to tell. I'm gonna guess possibly, maybe one a day per the two bathrooms at the park. And when the baseball is going, probably two or three there for, during that time. But there, the big cost is gonna be the sanitizer that we're going to have to buy. The, the dispensers are only six bucks apiece, so that's not a big expense. And they lock. It's just the bag of sanitizers just gone out of control to get.
So it could be thirty bags of sanitizer a month, times thirty dollars, nine hundred dollars, plus a hundred dollars for the extra cleaning, so we're looking at around a thousand dollars per month?
Exactly, that's what I estimated. And that would be
That hundred dollars, Gary, that hundred dollars extra for Buddy, that's on top of what we would normally pay him.
Yes, the normal cleaning the bathrooms and locking them every night, because he locks them seven days a week. He just opens them on the weekend. That was three fifty.
Okay, so it'll be four fifty.
Be four fifty with him checking them during the weekends and then marking off the card as many times as needs to for the CDC regulation.
And the three
I just wanted that to be the
Sorry.
I just wanted that to be clear to everybody. Go ahead Christina.
The three hundred and fifty dollars is already in our budget, correct?
Yes, yes.
So it'll be coming up with a thousand more a month. One of the things if we do decide to do this, um, is that when I was reading through all the guidelines, I think it would be important to make those guidelines available to the parents in print, like if the um, the sports league opens up because they talk about how to sanitize the bats. The, and you know, the things that kids are going to touch, uh, the balls, the helmets, the water bottles and making sure that no kids um, accidentally, you know, drink off somebody else's water bottle, things like that. So there were a lot of good guidelines in there that we could give to Buddy to distribute to parents.
Well, I already have given it to Buddy. He's going to give you a little bit of a report on it. He's on right now if you'd like to hear him.
Oh yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, no, I do have a copy of, of the CDC guidelines and, and it basically is, is, is what I was saying before as far as the social distancing in the dugout, the six feet, the masks are required in, in the dugout, not on the field. Uh, there will be no gatherings. Uh, with Gary saying that the families and parents can come, we are still going to try to limit it to just, you know, the parents and, and we'll, we're going to do the X's out on the bleachers to keep the social distance six foot apart. Um, as far as the snack shack goes, it will be sealed items. Although it says on here as long as they're prepackaged, so we might do the hot dog thing. I, I'm not too sure yet. I'm not focusing on the snack shack as I am more of just getting the kids out there to play. Um, we will be doing, as far the equipment goes, I will be sanitizing. And now on here, it states after each use. Um, it is also recommended that for family, if, if they would bring their own helmet and bat. So then that way that would limit that. Now, some kids will be able to do that and then some won't. We have enough helmets down there to where I can actually just give the kids that can't, they can all have their own helmet. So there will be no needing to sanitize the helmets as because they're not going to be switching helmets. They'll all have their own helmet and hopefully all their own bats. If not, we can sanitize the bats. That's not a problem. Um, we will have masks and again, the restaurants will have the sanitizer, we'll have sanitizer stations there. The drinking fountain that I, we're going to close that down completely. Because that is just, that's, that's not a good, good thing. But we do have water available for the kids. Um.
Board members are going to um, continuously check, make sure.
So basically, I mean, that's, that's as far as following all the guidelines, I mean, we got that down. You know, um, I, I did, you'd mentioned, you know, last week or last month about the gathering for the signups. Um, uh, we are working on a webpage right now so they can do online signups. That should be done here in the next day or two. So we can do the signups online as well as have a few signups throughout town. But, so I mean, we're working on everything. I just, hopefully we can get a, an okay.
Well, uh, this meeting would be a good opportunity if there are people listening. If you need bats, I'm sure people would contribute either money or the bats, you know?
Right. I mean, we got bats, but we, the sponsors, you know, we, because last year, all the sponsors that sponsored last year, we just continued rolling over to this year. So, I mean, that's what the sponsors are for, are for, you know, people that can't afford to play or bats or equipment. So, I mean, we, we can handle the bat. And it just all depends on how many kids we get this season, you know?
Right.
So, but as far as the helmets go, we're good on that and the bats, we can probably give every kid a bat too or, and just so they have their own equipment. Now they won't be, I, I think I'm going to go ahead and it says here that they can have their equipment bags and, and their stuff and their water bottles in the dugout. But to keep it separated, again, I think I'm going to just get rid of that all the way together and just to where they bring in their helmet, their bat and their water in the dugouts. They can leave the bags and everything else in the car, you know, so.
Um, at school. Buddy, I'm wondering if your parents would be open to this. At school, we have a COVID waiver um, for when students come on campus and we could give you the verbiage that the schools are using. Um, and the parents sign a waiver. Would you be willing to look at that?
Yes, uh, I guess I had that down on my last meeting that yes, they will sign a waiver. Not only for the insurance and for you guys, but as, as far as a COVID nineteen-one as well. And there will be PDFs for the COVID, the, the spread of COVID and all that plaster. We'll have it posted on the snack shack and out of the field for rules and guidelines. And, and then I will be taking temperatures, walking into the park. The handheld one. I'll have somebody there so, you know, I, I can really tell them that they're not allowed in the park. Now, if they choose to turn right or turn left, you know, well, we'll have to approach that intersection when it comes.
Okay, well Buddy, I'm, I'm sure you'll keep us posted at every meeting and let us know if you need things. Um, I'm sure the community really wants to see the kids have this softball season this year.
Okay, yes, I will.
Okay.
Thank you Buddy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, so do I have a, a motion to approve opening the parks under the uh, rules and regulations we talked about um, this evening?
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right. Yay. Christina Tink, are you happy that we're opening the park?
Most definitely.
Yes. Whoops, sorry.
Um, now we're going to go into closed session for the public employee performance evaluation. No specific complaints, charges will be considered. Title Director of Operations, General Manager. So Jim, will you um, break us out, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Good night Buddy.
Bye Buddy.
Bye, thank you.
Thanks Buddy.
Looks like we're all here. Who are we missing? Oh, we're all here. Okay.
I don't. Christina.
Oh. Where did Christina go? Woo, there she is. Okay, we are now um, out of closed session. And um, Ms. Brooks is going to uh, give us the overall of what went on in the closed session.
Okay, thank you President Swart. As the Vice President of the Board, uh, Ms. Swart has asked me to give the public um, the report of what went on in closed session. Um, what went on in closed session is that we agreed to settle a grievance with our employee. And we agreed to it one hundred percent, except for one paragraph, which our employee agreed to strike from the grievance. We have further um, heard the amounts of money that Mr. Yearsley has been owed for some uh, services that he has rendered to the district. And those amounts are as follows, and we must vote on those amounts in open session. Those amounts are as follows. Six thousand nine hundred dollars to compensate him for his one hundred and eighty-four hours at his regular pay rate of thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the uh, unified command services that he did on the twenty-twenty Apple Fire incident. Seventeen hundred dollars for compensation for the period of January eighteenth through January twenty-ninth, which had to do with a medical situation that um, we covered in closed session. And a remaining nineteen thousand one hundred eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for his unpaid duty officer coverage that began on June first and went through February seventh, twenty twenty, I should say June first um, twenty twenty through February seventh, twenty twenty-one, which will compensate him for the duty officer coverage that he has had to provide service for our district. In total, that comes to twenty-seven thousand seven eleven and twenty-five cents. But we recently heard that um, our bookkeeper has made a payment to him for partial services. And so whatever has been paid to Mr. Yearsley would be removed from that total amount of the twenty-seven, seven, eleven and twenty-five cents. And so that is what we are um, to discuss in open session now, those amounts.
Do um, any of the board members have any comment, other comments on this compensation package? And um, the settlement of the grievance?
We should say also that we um, moving forward, we also talked about that we would like to have on the March agenda to amend Mr. Yearsley's current employment agreement to um, provide for the ability for him to provide services, additional services to our district beyond what he is, has already agreed to in his service agreement. And that will be brought to the March meeting um, to decide. But what's before the board tonight is the amount of the grievance settlement.
Any board members have any uh, thing they want to add to that or discuss? Okay, um, I'd like to um, get a motion to pay the settlement out as Ms., Ms. Brooks has um, given us.
So that would be twenty-seven thousand seven eleven twenty-five less any payment he has already received. So the uh, balance due to him that subtracted out of that.
So moved.
Johnny moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'd like a roll call vote again, Mr. Yearsley.
Gil Swart?
Yes, aye.
Lori Klimowitz?
Aye.
Christina Brooke?
Aye.
Johnny Tolbert?
Uh.
Christina Gorki?
Aye.
Okay. So that um, actually has covered um, the discussion and possible action regarding alleged back pay owed to Director of Operations and General Manager. So that's actually um, taken care of all that. The only thing I'd like to add is that there were a few other things in the agreement. And we as a board will have to um, work at making sure that we uh, keep that in mind. Um, that we all are, need to be on our best behavior going forward. And we want to, we want to turn over a new leaf and we want to help make things run as smoothly as possible. And help our fire department and our, our park department and work with Buddy on the. And work with Buddy on the youth uh youth sports league and and really try to make things run smoothly. Okay, um are, are there, is there anyone that would like to make a comment in the uh public? Mr. Break Bill?
I see no, oh, I have one hand that's up and I believe it's from the
Okay.
radio station.
Okay.
I see the hand.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh my question is in regards to the reopening of Covington Park. In the agenda, it also says CSD office. Is there a plan to reopen the CSD office as well?
Yes. I, uh, am I correct about that, Mr. Yearsley?
Yes, that was opening all facilities because uh we, we have the facilities here if needed to wash hands. So it does include the office.
Okay, and this reopening, is it effective immediately? So people can go to the park as of tomorrow or will it take a few days?
No, we're gonna have to install the um, the units to be put in the bathrooms and stuff. So no, it, we have to get them in and we have to install them. So I, I don't know how long it'll take because sanitizer has been hard to get. And we have already ordered them, so now we'll just have to see when they'll be here. So I can't give you an exact date till I get that.
All right. That was my question. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Uh are there any other questions out there, Mr. Break Bill?
No ma'am, that's it.
Okay, um Lori, would you like to make any comment before we sign off?
Um you know, I just wanna say thank you to our fire department in general for all of the services that they do give us. And um hope that they know that people do care, even though a lot of people don't know what you guys go through. Anyway, thank you.
Johnny?
As always, first and foremost, thank you to the men and women of Montgomery Fire Department. Thank you to the men and women working as dis- district staff. Do a very hard job and we really appreciate you. Also, um I do believe I missed a birthday last weekend. Mrs. Swart?
You, you're bound and determined to age me.
Um unfortunately, I have nothing to do with that. I think God did that when he missed that. I, I can't control aging, sorry. Because if I could, I'd be-
Thank you, Johnny.
Thirty-nine, right?
Thank you. Yeah, that's what my mother always said. She was thirty-nine, even when I got to be forty. Thanks, Johnny.
So belated every birthday to you.
Thank you.
And that's all. Have the night.
Okay. Tink? Do you have anything you want to add?
Just excited to see where the year takes us.
Yeah. Christina Brooke?
Um I just think that we've had a really good meeting tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out for an extra meeting. Um I'm very hopeful uh going forward. And um I'm really looking forward to seeing the kids play at the park and with the baseball team. And we thank Buddy for all the work that he's doing with the children and and all the volunteers that are helping with that. Of course, ditto, thanks. We can't thank the fire department enough, everyone who's involved with that. And um so I'm looking forward to a new, fresh beginning in a lot of ways.
Thanks Christina. And I, I will uh say that I, I go along with everything that Christina said. And um I, I think that things are gonna start moving in a better direction now. And I'm, I'm really glad to be here and working on it with uh all the other board members and with the community. So that's, that's it. So um I-
Gil? Good, Gil?
Yes.
Did I just say one more thing at the end here? I want everybody to know that Brittany has worked endless on grants to do with the park, with helping find this COVID stuff out. We've been researching for months. She's had to find sanitizer. So we gotta thank her for a lot of extra work she's put in to make all these things happen. She's really been doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you, Brittany. Okay, um our next next regular meeting. Um I'm going to uh close this session. And I'm just looking at what the date's gonna be. On our next meeting is gonna be March seventeenth at six o'clock. We hope to see everybody um on Zoom. I don't think we're going to be um going back into the meetings quite yet at the park. We'll talk, we'll discuss that at next month's uh meeting on Zoom.
Uh yeah, Gil, I think, I think you're right. Because of the limited amount of room we are gonna have and gathering of people and we don't know how many will come to the meeting. I think right off at the first, we probably should continue with Zoom till we, you know, till a little bit more lets up with the COVID.
Got it. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Great meeting. Um see you again in March. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Second.